Learning how to be creative problem solvers. Learning how to be critical thinkers. Why don't you come and stand in front, keep coming, so that you're all together in there, okay? They learn skills about today's world and tomorrow's world, and they try to think of different ways to solve those problems. We had this year 10 teams represented at our competition, our state competition, and it was held here at Southwest Middle School in Lawrence. And so we were really thrilled to have that many teams here. We had about 500 participants that day, and I'll have to tell you, my heart was a little bursting with pride that day because so many of our teams were called forward for special recognitions and because they did so well in the competition. So first of all, I'll tell you a little bit about our two special DI awards. It was called the Spirit of DI Award, and if you received that, raise your hand. Not all of our kids could be here this evening. DI was awarded for exceptional spirit, teamwork, volunteerism, and sportsmanship. And our two teams wore Close Encounters from West Middle School, the emojis, and the meme event from Lawrence Elementary, the Blue Lightning team. And so those two teams were very much honored. Very few teams get these awards, and so we were thrilled that those teams were awarded those special honors. As far as the rest of the teams, we had Teams Place in Pace of Change, which is a technical challenge. The second place went to DI Dolphins. Raise your hand if I say your team. Fifth place went to Si Si Kids, and seventh place went to Somnium Cogetari Concilio. Did I say that correctly? Okay. All right. In our Get a Clue competition, which was the scientific competition, we had first, second, and third place winners. Quail Run's Mr. BCTT got first. Quail Run won. Quail Run Elementary team got second, and the IQ Nader team from Hillcrest and Langston Hills, in Langston Hughes, got third, all right? And then on our middle level competition, second place went to the Confused Turtles from West Middle School, all right? And then Close Encounters middle level also went to the Emojis who got second place. Finally, Project Outreach was the meme event, and we had an elementary team participating, the Blue Lightning. Anybody from Blue Lightning here? There they are, they're all here, yay. And you can see that they all have medals, they also have some trophies. Hold up your trophies if you have them. And one more special presentation that we had that day was Dr. Rick Dole received the Superintendent of the Year Award from Destination Imagination. And so we had winners all around that day. And so thank you, Lawrence Public Schools, for being part of our competition, our celebration that day. Hi, congratulations. Congratulations, congratulations, congratulations. Glad you could come tonight, thank you. Clara. I'll introduce you. How's that? Okay, do you want me to go first, or do you want me to say what it is? What are you going to say about it?
It's just about like what our school's...
Okay. So, yes.
Okay, the next item is the Kansas City Area Teachers of Mathematics Honors, and we still have Kathy Bowen for that one.
Yes, on the very same day that we had all of the Destination Imagination things happening over in Kansas City, we had Kansas Area Teachers of Mathematics contest happening. Anna Heinrichs is another one of my colleagues, and she's going to tell you a little bit more about that competition.
For KC ATM, if you were a competitor and you are here, can you please come forward? Okay, I'm going to read this, and then have you read yours. Does that work? Okay. So for KC ATM, there are two components. There's a team competition, and there's an individual competition. So we had winners in both team competitions and individual. So we had for fourth grade, tied for second place, we had a team from Quail Run. Wave. And we had a team from Sunset Hill. And then third place, we had a team from Langston Hughes. In sixth grade, our team competition took first place, the Southwest Middle School team. And we had Bill Quain. He actually tied for first place in the individual algebra test. And we have Clara, who's going to tell us a little bit about her school and her team.
Ms. Reaver and Mr. Heath took eight LMCMS students to the KC ATM competition on April 2nd. Clara Bodie, Ilya Yurimenko, Dumeby, Enya Nyah, River Foster, Gaby Kennedy O'reve, and Giovanni Lulu Perretas competed in the Mathematics Team Competition, while Annabelle Moore and Amanda Earnhardt competed in the Individual Math Testing Competition. Annabelle and Amanda earned multiple ribbons as they placed in several of their test categories.
All right. So you all want to go, and shake hands. Go shake their hands.
Okay, our next item is the Model UN Nations, I'm sorry, Model United Nations Honors. And for that, we have, are you all coming together, or should we do Liberty Memorial Central first?
Yeah.
All right. We'll do that.
Who's the boss? Model UN Kids, LMCMS, come on up, stand here, please. Over here. Monica's going to speak on our behalf.
LMCMS had 47th and 8th grade participants in Model UN this year, representing 16 countries. Students worked for two quarters to learn about their countries, to analyze their country's positions on United Nations topics, and to develop evidence-based arguments supporting their country's positions. At the Topeka Model United Nations event, LMCMS had several winners. Delegate Awards went to Donovan Dillon, Reese Woolford, Violet Amawak, Haley Godo, Bella Stoll, Stella Tungy, and Katie Messin Ward, won second-best overall delegate for middle schoolers. Speech awards went to Maxime Smith, Bella Stoll, Katie Messin Ward, Violet Amawak, Zora Lawton Barker, Jack Bellamere, and Stella Tungy. We are very proud of our delegates for their dedication, hard work, and achievements.
Uh-huh. Well, okay, next we have South Middle School, Ashley Beeson-Maines. And if the others want to come up too, you can, and we'll just do each school individually.
Good evening. I am so proud to introduce three of our five students who competed at Model United Nations and Kansas History Day. So this evening, Nicholas Dvorsky is with us. He was the third-place delegate from his 7th-grade council, delegate of Germany. Trevor Johnson placed at Regionals in Kansas History Day for his project about Francisco Pizarro, and just competed at the state competition on Saturday. Lisa Yang also participated at Model UN for her 8th-grade council and was the delegate of Uganda. And sadly, we are missing Ethan Berkeley, who competed at Model UN as the delegate of Canada, and Kenna McNally, who just took third place at the state contest for Kansas History Day, her project about Dorothea Lange. And if either the first or second place finishers are unable to attend the national competition, she'll be headed to Washington DC. Congratulations.
Great, thank you. Okay, next, let's do Danny Lawton Barker from Southwest Middle School, and all of
All right. Thank you for having us here tonight, we appreciate it. We have a portion of our Model UN delegation. We have 48 kids participate in Model UN from Southwest this year, 7th and 8th grade, but we brought a lot of kids observing as 6th graders too, so we're hoping to have another great group next year. Mr. Orlando, who is one of the 8th-grade history teachers, and Mr. Barker, my husband, the other 8th-grade history teacher, they helped me sponsor this activity. But we had 48 great student delegates who worked really hard, put in lots and lots of hours from the beginning of the year until we went in February. And I want to congratulate each and every one of the delegates, because as everybody knows who does things like this, not everybody walks away with a medal or a certificate, but they definitely earned it, because there's so much work involved in this activity. However, we did have some students receive some special awards, so I wanted to give a shout-out to those. John Loes, representing DPRK, which is North Korea, for those who don't know, he received a Best With Right speech in General Assembly II.
And Aaron Guo, representing South Sudan, won third-place best delegate in World Council I.
Joe Lucian, representing Pakistan, received second-place best delegate in World Council B.
Justin Guppy Hicks, representing Israel, best authorship speech in World Council C.
I clarified with Justin that that's really what he goes by, but he does. And then we also, so those were our individual awards, but then we received some team awards too, which is really awesome. So if you're an 8th grader, you have the option to debate against just 8th graders, or you can debate against 8th through 12th graders, which is a really scary challenge, and I'm glad they're doing it and not me. But we received some awards for that. So we received the third-place overall best delegation for a middle school with the Kingdom of Sweden, and those students were Chloe Fraser, Madison Geezer, Patrick Keating, and Anna Peard.
And also second-place overall best delegation for middle school, South Sudan, Jack Binkelmann, Henry DeWitt, Kyle Flashbarth, Kirk Geary Weiss, and Aaron Guo.
And then we also received first-place overall best delegation middle school for Australia, Ian Haas, Keaton Hoy, Charlie Johnson, Sajal Tapah, and Elliot Wiesnott.
Our delegations from Sweden, Australia also took two of the three recognitions for best written position papers in high school councils.
Thank you.
Middle School.
It's Charlotte. We are the West Middle School Model United Nations team. We were small, but mighty. There were only seven of us, six of them were 6th graders, who we have here. Keon O'Leary, Zana Ingram, who won best overall middle school position paper, William Schmidt, representing the United States, and Noah Rantia, who represented, as you can guess, the country of Spain. He won three different awards. He won the best speech of negation in his council. He won best overall, third-place best overall middle school delegate, and he won the best delegate in his council. We are looking forward to next year. We already have about 25 students ready to roll.
Okay, and next is Janice Fullerton, the Gifted Education Facilitator for both of our high schools.
Oh. I'm not Janice. I'm the only one. Good evening, everyone. I am really pleased to be here tonight. Janice and I do have joint custody of this young man right here. Stefan Petrovic, it's a name to remember. She taught Stefan at South Junior High back in the day, South Junior High, raised him up, taught him the ways of Model UN, and then turned him over to me the last two years at Lawrence High School. So she got to take credit for him last year, and I get to take credit for him this year, which just happens to be his senior year, so. Stefan was presented with the Janae Weekly Outstanding Officer Award this year at Topeka Model UN, and this is named after a teacher who has supported Model UN in Topeka for over 30 years, and it's a great honor, and we're very proud of him. Stefan served as president of the Security Council and was given this honor by a vote of teachers and sponsors in attendance. So it's kind of like the Academy Awards, the people who really know what an excellent Model UN competitor looks like voted for this guy. Stefan has participated in Topeka Model UN since 7th grade, which at the time was the earliest year that you could participate when we were junior highs. He is also, I'm just going to brag a little bit more, he's also LHS Student Body President and will be attending Harvard in the fall. And in case you were wondering, yes, he does have political aspirations. And by the way, Stefan, there is an election coming up in Kansas in a couple of years, I believe. So I think maybe you might need to get your priorities straight.
Oh, nice, nice.
And tell Harvard you'll be right with them, but there's some business in Kansas I need to take care of. Enough with the difficulty already, let's get on with the stars. But Stefan wants to say a little bit about the Model UN program.
Yeah, hey, everyone. I just want to take a moment, and I really didn't have anything prepared exactly to say, but I just want to take a moment and say how important Model United Nations has been in my development, in my, you know, speaking skills, communication skills, interpersonal skills. And I know that most of the students have left, but, and I spoke to Mr. Heath about this a little bit earlier, but I had the opportunity to go in and talk and work with some of them at Liberty Memorial Central Middle School and meet with a lot of these middle schoolers. And you guys should be proud, really, of the quality and level of excellence that exists in Lawrence Public Schools, in particular in middle schools. We have a bunch of great middle schoolers who know really what they're doing, who are learning about the world, learning about diplomacy, learning about the United Nations. And I think teaching global, common values is really what's important and makes Lawrence a very unique and special place. So we should all, as Lorenzians, I think, be really proud of the youth that we have raised and the excellence and quality, you know, with which they carry themselves. So I think we should probably give it up for, you know, the kids, the middle schoolers of Lawrence, of Lawrence. So.
Thanks for supporting us.
Okay, and now we will move on to the Kansas History Day competitors. I think we've already heard from the South Middle School participants on this, but we'll invite Mr. Heath back, Devin Heath, to talk about the Liberty Memorial Central Middle School participants or winners. Or Reese Woolford might make a really good person as well.
LMCMS had seven students and four projects for History Day this year. Zach Popjoy and Charlie Hughes studied the impact of Claude Tomba on astronomy. Clara Bodie and Sylvia Wector studied the development of evolutionary theory. Reese Woolford studied the race to reach the North Pole, and Cora Kelsey and Zoe Bitters studied the extinction of passenger pigeons. At Regionals, three of our teams qualified for state competition, which was held this past Saturday at Washburn University. LMCMS is very proud of our History Day competitors and hope that they continue to pursue historical analysis through this competition in the coming years.
Okay, and last but not least, we have Valerie Schrag, the Social Studies Teacher at Lawrence High School.
The last of an incredible amount of wonderful things going on in the Lawrence Public Schools. I am here today, my name is Valerie Schrag, and I'm representing myself as well as Tracy Murray. Tracy Murray is the AP European History Teacher at Lawrence High School. I am one of the AP US History Teachers at Lawrence High School, and on Saturday, we took seven Lawrence High students to the State History Day competition. This year's theme for the National History Day competition was exploration, encounter, and exchange, and all of the projects dealt with that theme in one way. We have two of our participants here, both of whom are qualifiers for the national competition. So we have first Megan Wisby, representing herself and her partner Mia Waters. They placed first in Senior Group Exhibits with The Chaos of Music after World War I, which featured research on the works of Schoenberg, Stravinsky, and Shostakovich. Our other first-place winner, national qualifier, was Alexis Crey, who qualified first in Senior Individual Exhibits with her project entitled John Muir, America's First Environmentalist. Also here tonight, we have Zuzu Melcher, who is the alternate, and her category, she replacing third Senior Individual Documentaries on Men and Rubber, researching the rubber industry in Brazil. Our other alternate for Nationals placing third was Sharon Surbit, with her Senior Individual website entitled The Rise of Consumerism in the 1950s. In addition, we had two other young women who competed grandly but did not fall in the top three. They were Leah Merritt, with her website Les Chambres Sur les Niens, The Courage of a Town United, and Tori Mitchell, a Senior Individual Exhibit with The Middle Passage. We are excitedly preparing to take these young women with us to Washington DC to compete at National History Day in June, and of course, see the sights in DC, and introduce them to our nation's capital as well. Both Tracy Murray and I are very, very proud of their accomplishments, so thank you.
Okay, so we will move on then from all of that, all of those adorable faces, to our consent agenda. Oh, we do, I'm sorry. One more adorable face. Let's see. Jesse Brinson. So we limit our audience participation to three minutes, and Janice will be the timekeeper, but if that's not enough, you are welcome to call us or email us at any point.
Is this where I stand?
Uh-huh, exactly, right there. And I think the mic is already on.
All right, great. Like you said, my name is Jesse Brinson. My wife, Tori, and I are parents of three under the age of eight here in Lawrence. I was at the Justice Matters near Maya Assembly recently with close to 2,000 other people and heard about some powerful and effective programs called Lemonade for Life and Trauma Smart that train teachers and professionals to help preschool children with high ACE scores, adverse childhood experiences, overcome the long-term negative effects of such traumatic experiences. At the Assembly, it was proposed as a starting point to provide childhood trauma and resilience training to at least 100 professionals using these programs at a funding cost of $100,000. The science and research from the groundbreaking ACE studies gives great hope that things can turn around very rapidly for preschoolers once they, once those with high ACE scores are identified and provided these tailored services. As I walked out of the Assembly, I thought, $100,000, that's a very small level of investment for such a well-documented proven result. Then I remembered that the School Board last month approved the spending, and I think my numbers is incorrect here, but 2.5 million for iPads for students. That made me think surely 1,000, 100,000 could be allocated to equip our teachers and professionals to provide these much-needed services to our young children. I'd like to think we would choose to fund services over screen time when it comes to the well-being and development of our children. Is the School Board going to look into funding these initiatives that can positively impact the trajectory of our preschoolers' life?
Thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda then is the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are those that are considered routine and are adopted by one motion unless any board member or the superintendent requests that an item be removed, and then those items would be voted on separately. And I believe we have a retirement to recognize before we do this, so go ahead, Marcel.
Yeah, we have two retirements to recognize. So District would like to recognize Mary Almanza for her 33 years of service, and Patricia Gilka for her 11 years of service and devotion to the community and its schools. And with that, I move the Board of Education to adopt the items listed on the Consent Agenda.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, Janice.
Yes.
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 Okay, next is the report of the President of the Board of Education, and I don't have a report this evening, so I will turn it over to Dr. Dole for the Superintendent Report.
Thanks, Vanessa, I just have a couple tonight. I was out of town this weekend, so I couldn't attend the Cordley 100th Anniversary Party yesterday, but I was pleased the weather held off, and the community was able to enjoy all the games, historical displays, and panel discussions. Thanks to the Cordley staff and parent volunteers who worked many hours to plan and host that event. My understanding, it was well-attended, and there were some veteran members of our community that were reminiscing about their days at Cordley, so that's pretty cool. Community has an opportunity this Friday from 6:00 to 8:00 to visit Sunset Hill. Following extensive building improvements there, Sunset Hill will host a cultural kaleidoscope showcasing student, artists, and authors. It's a come-and-go style open house, so feel free to drop in, and I recommend that you do, it's a beautiful building. And the Board Lunch tomorrow is at Schwagler, starting at 11:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Board Commentary.
I just have a question. The agenda noted dot time was 4:30 to 6:30, is it 4:30 to 6:30 or 6:00 to 8:00 for the Sunset Hill?
6:00 to 8:00.
6:00 to 8:00, okay, thank you.
I would like...
I would like to just say that I did get to attend the Cordley 100th anniversary. It was awesome. And so thank you to everybody who put tons and tons of work into really hosting a great event. And if you have a chance, the historical timeline is going to be up for the rest of the year, and it's really something to see. So if you get a chance to pop in, you should.
Thank you. Okay, then we will move on then to our first report this evening, which is a report on digital citizenship with Jerry Kimball.
I have a few other people joining me for this report. So I'll let you introduce yourselves while I get the technology going here.
I'm Marnie Fleming, counselor at Southwest Middle School.
And I'm Denise Johnson. I'm the ESL Health and Wellness Coordinator for this school district.
I'm Christina Brumfield. I'm the Library Media Specialist at Hillcrest.
All right, well, this evening, we're here to talk to you about the Board of Education goal to develop and align district expectations for curriculum and instruction and to raise achievement of all students. And in this, we investigated a plan for integrated digital citizenship curriculum that included parent education. In the past, schools have done a lot of work in the area of character education and positive behavior supports, but we're seeing now with the influx of technology in our schools that we need to make sure that we are addressing digital citizenship as well. I think it's a misnomer that we think that because students are so adept at technology, that they can just immediately know how to use it in the classroom, that they know the right things to do, and that they can transform and start researching and doing all of those things well. We need to make sure that we are teaching them and guiding them along the way. Digital citizenship, sometimes in the literature, is known as the nine Ps. These are the things that we work on with students to make sure that they are protected and that they are good citizens as they use the technology devices. So what we're going to do next is just give you a view of what happens in our elementary, middle, and high schools in regard to digital citizenship.
Okay, so at the elementary level, this consists of kind of some basic cyber safety information, not sharing personal information, not sharing passwords, usernames, your full name, your address, your school, your phone number, those kind of pieces of information. It also includes netiquette, so how to handle yourself online, manners, that kind of thing, and also that what you say when you're online stays online. So you can delete that, but you've created a footprint. And so even at a very basic level, making sure that they're understanding that. It also includes having students to understand that they do not meet people, that they only know online. So we may have our internet friends, but they stay online. We meet our face-to-face friends that we know in person. And then our lessons also include being a responsible user of information. And so just very briefly, that would be double-checking your information and evaluating your resources, citing information that isn't your own, and summarizing instead of plagiarizing.
I'm Denise Johnson, and part of my responsibilities in the school district is to assist and implement the human sexuality standards that our school board adopted in 2013. This is my connection to our presentation this evening. After the first year of implementing the standards, we reflected as a team on what standards needed more attention. The screen that you see now shows five of the 57 standards that 6th through 8th grades cover and the standards that we wanted to set a goal for in order for improvement. The healthy relationship strand of this focus, in the spring of 2014, Southwest Middle School brought David Garcia, a police officer from the Lawrence Police Department, to speak with the students during an assembly on digital citizenship. That summer, I met with Marnie, the school counselor and building administration, to brainstorm next steps after the assembly. We started with a parent night, then grade-level assemblies, and followed up with guidance lessons during content to allow students to ask questions in a small group setting. Each middle school followed that same protocol. Marnie will take you on this journey that our middle school students and families travel during these presentations.
All right, so at Southwest, this past fall is when we did this. This year, we started with our parent night with Southwest staff and our SRO, as well as members from the Lawrence Police Department. That following Wednesday, we did grade-level assemblies with the same staff there, so they got to hear what their parents had heard in a smaller group. And then following up the next three days, we went into the classrooms to even make it a smaller group and allow for any questions they might have had, and go a little further into the digital citizenship. So the following is my brief presentation of the classroom guidance lessons that all our students saw. We titled this, Your Digital Life: Social Media, Cyberbullying, Online Responsibility, and Your Digital Footprint. Those are the main topics we focused on. So to start out with, I always show this quote, and we talk about where this quote comes from, what it means, and then what it means in respect to your digital life. But most of the kids catching on right away, meaning that with great power, you can either use that power or abuse that power, and how it can either have a very positive impact on your life or can be detrimental. Then we take some time for any questions or comments or concerns that the students had from their grade-level presentations with the Lawrence Police Department staff and our SRO. And then we start with cyberbullying. We go over what cyberbullying is, talk about that definition. We use a definition of bullying as being one-sided, repeated, unfair use of power to either exclude, intimidate, harm, or hurt somebody else. So then we go through, cyberbullying is basically doing that using technology. I show a brief video here. This young lady is on the stage at a spelling bee, and instead of spelling, she is reading a note about another girl in the audience that said some pretty harmful things about it. It shows the other girl's reaction, and then afterwards says, "If you wouldn't post it online, why would you..." Or "If you were saying in person, why would you post it online?" We talk about that very reason and why cyberbullying is more prevalent, and we talk about the reaction of the girl who was having those things said about her. We then jump into, this year anyways, we were seeing maybe some more anonymous accounts, group messages, and just excluding others through those group messages. And we asked about if that would be considered forms of cyberbullying, and had some really good conversations about those things. Next, we move through online responsibility. These are things to remember. I'll let you read those on the screen. Basically remembering that there's a person on the other side of the screen to think first, and we'll go through what that means. And then again, about the difference in digital literacy and how that is different between or from digital citizenship. We then talk about appropriate things to share. This is a short video. It's kind of a rap. It's pretty silly, but the kids catch on to it pretty quickly. And you can see on the right-hand screen, these are the 10 things they talk about. I like this post because it makes it a little more fun for them, not just about being safe, choosing your pictures wisely, and not giving out information, but just how to be a good friend even online, not bragging, not sharing too much information, choosing your photos carefully. Then we start talking about what your digital footprint is, and we describe that as anything that you search online, anything that you post, share, tweet, or send, or anything that is posted about you leaves a trail, and that's your digital footprint. Finally, we look at things to help with your digital footprint, and we have a sign and use the acronym THINK. So anytime before you're posting, to think, is this true? Is it helping anybody, inspiring anybody? Is it necessary or kind? And this is another short video we see and then talk about how to remember those things anytime before we post. And then we follow up with an activity where our students have the opportunity to make their own digital footprint. And instead of talking about what not to post or what not to do, we talk about positive things that they can be doing to make that a positive thing. So things that they might want their college admissions counselor to find about them or a potential employer, maybe if their grandparents got online, what type of things, what kind of footprint do you want to leave? That's about it for our guidance lessons, and we always open it up if there was any questions that they did not feel comfortable about asking in the group, that they can always schedule one-on-one time or pop into the guidance office.
I'd like to just thank Marnie. Marnie's presentation and what she did as a guidance counselor, she took that presentation, presented it to Southwest, and then shared that to our other three middle schools. So all counselors had a very similar presentation. So everyone across the board was getting the exact same thing. Officer Garcia visited with all of the, all middle schools on this in assembly and then again during guidance, so it was an excellent presentation. The National Standards for Sexuality Education addresses social media also. And in the high school, we are doing something, we are doing something very similar. We address those standards in our ninth grade health, and we'll be working with our high schoolers in order to help and set, or our high schools, in order to help and set similar goals for our middle schools.
So Marnie and the counselors have gathered some resources that we could share with all of our schools and students and parents. We are working on some resources for parents as well to have on the website so that they could access those. And one of the best ones that we're finding is the Common Sense Media. It has a full curriculum. It's an OER. It's an open educational resource. It's free. And so right now, TNL is looking at that and making sure that everything is right in line with what we would like to do, but we were very excited to know about that.
The last part that I want to share is just where we're heading next. The conversations at the middle school during this journey that we took this year identified a few goals, and forming a leadership team that consists of community members, parents, students, and administration that will determine what those next steps look like. And as Jerry mentioned to you, developing a resource for all to better understand the responsibilities of living in a digital world. Thank you.
Any questions?
Not seeing any. Thank you so much. This is great, and I appreciate the direction.
As we talked, we feel like we have a really good start.
Yeah.
But we have a ways to go, and the area where we feel we need to develop most is probably the high school. So, but we thank all of them for doing such a great job with this. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. And Jerry, don't go anywhere. You're up next as well. So the update on Learning Forward Future Ready Initiative.
Absolutely. So last month, you purchased the devices for the Learning Forward Future Ready Initiative, and we would like to give you an update as to what has happened in this month. So tonight, we want to talk to you a little bit about the roadmap, what we've been working on, and where we're headed. We will visit with you about devices, infrastructure, project management, professional development, and assessment. And at the bottom, we have two banner activities that we, we're proud that things are going along as scheduled. First of all, the first banner we'd like to celebrate is next week, we will hand out the teacher devices at all of the middle schools. Our devices are in, and we are working hard to get them all ready to go. So the four middle schools have all scheduled their time, and the tech department is ready to go out and hand those out next week. The other thing that we will talk about, and Jennifer Fessiden will talk about this in more detail, is that the WITS assessment of the infrastructure is complete, and I'll let you, I'll let you hear from her where we go from there. One of the things that, as the devices come in, we know that Wi-Fi is a concern, and so we have been searching in several different areas as to how we can give access to our students, be it in the community, at coffee shops, different places that would be willing to host our students. We're looking at some foundation grants, and we, this is, it seems like it's very hard to find information about this, but once you go down the right rabbit hole, things start opening up, and that's really what happened last week. I started finding out about some really good solutions that I think might be good for our families, like some very reduced rates for internet. And so we will, we'll keep you up to date on that. I think we're going to have to look at this from probably a two- to three-pronged approach. So maybe the community helping us out by having places where students can go to access that, having some of those KJTs that we've had this year available, and then maybe the parents having access to this low monthly rate on some internet access. So that's exciting news for us. We've also collaborated with people that have just recently been on this journey, and we had Drew Lane from Shawnee Mission School District come and talk to a group of teachers from the middle schools, and there were a few high school people there, not many, but mainly the middle school, because that's what we were focusing on. It was two hours of just shoot questions at him, ask him all those things you want to know about the rollout, how they did it, and what was going on. My biggest takeaway was Drew Lane said, you know, we talk about devices, we talk about infrastructure. At the end of the day, this is about people. It's about people working together. And so it was, it was nice to see so many people come in for that. On Thursday this week, we will have Dr. Connie Smith from Aletha here, and again, we will have about an hour and a half to just ask her questions and talk to her about how Aletha did that rollout. Since both of these school districts did it recently, we thought maybe we could learn some of the things that they would like to share with us. Also in this month, we set up our project management. With a deployment of this magnitude, it is important that we have a project management site set up, and so that site was set up for us. It's called Basecamp. I don't know if any of you are familiar with project management websites, but this has been a really good one. It allows us all to communicate together. There's message boards, there's tasks lists, there's, everything is there, very transparent. We all know what's going on at all times. Everyone is in Basecamp. We are glad to announce that needs to be in there. Our next step is our communication map. We are articulating the communication and how it will be sent out so that we don't miss people or groups. We have an onsite planning meeting that is set in May, where Apple will come onsite, meet with all of the building principals, tour the buildings, and talk about how we will deploy. One of the things we've talked about, and we haven't made any decisions because we're not into it far enough, but is a rolling deployment where we would deploy one school a day. They said that a deployment of this magnitude would be almost too much for an IT team to try to roll out four schools in one day. So they suggest that we do it that way. So we'll be talking with principals about how that will look in their building and how we will roll it out. We visited in Basecamp on the teacher devices, how we'll roll those out, professional development. We've talked about digital citizenship. One of the nice things about Basecamp is that they share resources from districts all over the country, so we can look at all of their resources and pick and choose what we feel fits our district best. We've talked about the parent education opportunities and care and maintenance of devices. We haven't made any decisions yet because we're getting those teams together so that those teacher teams can help make all of those big decisions that we need to make. So right now, I'll turn it over to Jennifer Fessiden to talk to you about the infrastructure assessment.
Hello. So as Jerry said, WITS has completed the site surveys.
Hello. So, as Jerry said, WITS has completed the, the site surveys the last week of March. They completed all of the, the surveys onsite. Last week, we had our first meeting, conference with them. It takes about an hour to go through each building's assessment. They go through, the, the one that we went through last week was Cordley. It was 78 pages. It goes through the routes they took. It's very detailed, gives us all of the, you know, the heat maps and, and what, what, what channels were on and all of those things. What we have found in, in the one, and I think it's going to be true as, as we go through all of them, is that the wireless access points that we have were not manually, when they were all put in, they were all on an automatic setting. They need to be manually. We need to really dial in on, on what wavelength and, and what channel and all of those things. The other thing that we're, we're finding is that there are a lot of out, there are a lot of devices outside that are interfering. Now, we can again dial that in. We can tell what they're on, whether those are devices outside the actual building or devices that we're bringing in, meaning us as teachers or whomever, that their devices also can act as a wireless access point. We're getting some interference. So, the good news is, I think a lot of what we need to do is just really dial in those wireless access points to eliminate some of the, the interference that we've been seeing and some of those droppings. The, they do go through a whole plan at the end of where we need to move access points a little bit, add some here or there. Again, the good news is it doesn't look like we're going to have to add a whole lot. So, our wireless technician was able to shadow the main engineer the entire time and learn from him. He will also be going to an additional training that was part of that whole package. So, as we move forward, he'll be able to do all of the changes we need, get it up to where we think it needs to be, and then he'll be able to support it as we move forward, knowing what, what we need to do. We're going to go ahead with Cordley, get that up, you know, make all of the changes that they suggested before school's out so we can see that it does actually make a difference. We have, I think, three more scheduled for this week. They're again about an hour apiece. And we're just going to continue knocking them out. So, as we have more information to give you, what kind of results we're finding after we do those changes, I'll be happy to report those as well. Okay?
Hi there. Kirsten Wondra, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. So, I just wanted to talk to you briefly about the professional development that we've got planned thus far for the summer months. I tried to encapsulate it in a way that was visually helpful, and it may or may not have been successful. So, to kind of give you an idea of what you're looking at, we've kind of capitalized on the CI3T triangle, just to kind of give you the idea that kind of the green area at the bottom is for everyone. And it's, it's an opportunity that's expected for our staff to participate in because it's a part of their contract time. Then, the yellow is less than our full staff because it's usually off-contract time where we're offering, you know, pay beyond their contract or meeting times beyond the school. So, those are kind of extended learning opportunities. And then, at the very top, those are specialized opportunities for a small subsection of our staff that are kind of away experiences, if you will, or kind of those really rich things that are more expensive, and we're just trying to hope to grow our own from there. So, those are the specialized trainings. The building teams, a lot of them are, are, are a part of those specialized trainings as they are poised to kind of help lead the initiative for their staff. So, that's kind of the background. And then, you've got the Venn diagram of the middle school and the high school. So, you can see that there's a lot of overlapping opportunities for them. And there are some specialized high school opportunities as they are kind of stepping into the role of exploring kind of Chromebooks, MacBooks, and iPads. They're kind of having learning opportunities centered around that. So, you'll see that the July 25th through the 28th, that Cave Eight experience, it's actually all about Google Apps for Education. It's at St. Mary's, Kansas, and it's got a focus on Chromebooks. So, the high school teams are heading that way to experience that for those days. And then, you'll see down at the bottom, on our district-wide PD Day, we are hoping to bring in an Apple trainer to give, notice it's yellow, it's an extended opportunity. Staff don't have to go to it, but it would be an opportunity for them to kind of experience the MacBook and see what ways that you could utilize that to further the learning experience for students. Other than that, we have the big one, June 14th. That's our first Explore Investigate Experience for staff. And they will have their device by then because obviously they're getting it next week. So, that, we're bringing in national and local presenters. Some of our staff are presenting, but we're borrowing from experience from districts around who have had an iPad rollout so that we can kind of borrow from the most common experiences. Then, we're sending a whole truckload of people to iPad Palooza. That includes the four middle school building teams in addition to the two high school teams. And that's down in Austin, Texas. So, those staff will be really well poised to help us with that July 20th. So, we're planning a very differentiated experience, kind of stepping staff into their levels of experience with the iPad and their comfort. So, that's that experience. And then, on July 12th, we'll have a lot of differentiated sessions that staff can choose depending on what their area of need is. We're looking to provide them with kind of a needs assessment so that they can kind of do some self-reflection as to where they see their level of comfort and capability in regards to using this as a one-to-one. And it's open K-12. So, there will be nice opportunities for staff to kind of cross-pollinate as all of our staff are working with students with technology in the buildings. The other opportunity that we're looking to move forward, we have been in conversation with KU and Altech. And we are working with them in the upcoming weeks to put in place a program evaluation. They have been working with Olathe Public Schools, and they, they've kind of been working on that. And again, they are well poised to help us as we haven't started our initiative yet to kind of get that pre-assessment data so that we can very much be adept in our initiative and make tweaks and changes as we go along with kind of the formative data that they're going to give us. But then, we also can have that long-range longitudinal data to see how we're doing with this initiative. And last but not least, building teams are set, both the middle school and high school teams. And I know the building administrators worked very diligently to make sure that the staff that were represented on those teams vary by content, vary by grade, and cross-campus-wise represent about every stakeholder they could come across. So, I know that that's a real positive there. And again, the teachers on these teams are the backbone of this initiative. And so, really, the beginning topics they're going to kind of grapple with in those teams are developing those norms and aspirations for this initiative moving forward. They're going to really grapple with the communication needed. When is that communication needed? Where and to what groups? And then, again, these are some beginning agenda topics, hopefully developing a rubric for the responses so that as we are gathering feedback from staff in the field, what, what's triggering action for us? And they've got a lot more topics, but I just wanted to kind of give you a couple of the key ones. Thank you.
So, as we move forward, we think about all of the things that we have yet to talk about and discuss and work with the teacher teams on digital citizenship. One of the teams at one of the schools said they would prefer to have some time to work with students on digital citizenship before they roll the iPads out. So, we'll be having that discussion with them. Classroom management, how does that change and how does that look, and some best practices? We are going to bring in a, a teacher from Olathe to talk about how classroom management changes when you have all of those devices in the classroom. Current digital resources working on the iPad. If they don't, making sure that they know that there are other devices available, laptops that they could check out so that they could use those as well. Details about the rollout in each school, a list of standard apps that will be deployed as we roll it out. We would like teachers to choose those standard apps. App Store availability. And I think that the policy committee is going to work a little bit on that. And Dave Cunningham says you'll probably work more on that next month. Handbook and calendaring. We've had several teachers email and say, hey, if we're going to have all of this on the iPad, could we have our handbook on there? And could we use the calendar? So, we are researching that to see how we could do that. It would save them some money in their schools. Student access. We talked about that before. How will we make sure that we can get kids online after school hours if they need to be? Talking about a parent academy. What do parents need to know? And when is the best time to roll that out? And how many times should we have parent academies? Filtering solution. Right now, we are trying out a filtering solution, looking at what it would be like to have the devices filtered off-campus. And so, we're working on that. Data collection. Kirsten just visited about that, working with KU and Altech. Building decisions. What are the things that will be building decisions as opposed to district decisions? So, those teacher teams will help us to, to decide on that as well. And how will the classroom, and, and that's that new app that they have, how will that look and work on the iPad? And then, finally, policy implementation. So, these are all the things that we will be discussing with those groups moving forward. So, what have we missed?
Jerry, I have a quick question about students. So, these are middle schoolers, but I'm, I'm fairly certain it's going to happen pretty soon. My question is twofold. So, when a student roots one of these things, is A, Apple going to stand by it, or is that going to void the warranty? And B, how is that going to, how are we going to address that with digital citizenship? I mean, is that something we're going to talk about immediately? Because if they root it, obviously, you can't filter it. They've got access to anything they want. You can't see what they're doing.
Absolutely. So, we will-
What does that mean?
Oh, if they can break into the operating system and get access past what, everything that is set up. So, root access to a computer beyond the operating system.
And so, that is part of the digital citizenship. I will ask that question because I'm sure it's happened in other districts before.
I'm sure it has.
So, thank you for that. I will ask that and find out.
I work with people who, you know, void warranties on purpose. So, I just-
Right.
It's something that immediately comes up is if they root it, which not all of them will, but there will be some that will be interested. And that's not always a bad thing as long as they do it in a, the proper way. So, that's why I thought digital citizenship, if that's something that can be discussed.
That's a great point. Thank you.
Jerry, I have a question maybe for you, Jennifer. So, we started with Cordley. Is the next, are you, are we looking at the middle schools for the next weeks while kids are still in school?
Yep. I think, we didn't know which school they were going to, the first one that came, they said, we're ready. We want to do this. They came up, they introduced it. Okay, we did Cordley first. So, I went back and said, okay, we need to reevaluate the order that we do this. And so, yes, middle schools will be first. We'll make sure that, that we have those ready to go.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay. And last but not least, we have our update from our next superintendent, so Kyle Hayden, talking about the superintendent leadership transition.
Okay. Kyle Hayden, Assistant Superintendent Business and Operations. Last time I was up here talking about the leadership transition was our last meeting, March 20th, actually, two meetings ago, March 21st. And at that point in time, I was talking to you about just some of my thoughts. And since then, I've put some of those into action. So, let me talk a little bit about what I've been doing. First of all, I'll talk about some of the new administrative hires. So, I think shortly after I had my conversation with you on the 21st, we hired Anna Stubblefield to be my replacement. And Anna will take over, obviously, as Assistant Superintendent Business and Operations beginning July 1st. There's already things I'm dumping on her, but that, she's more than capable of handling those things. But, so she's beginning that transition also, just like I'm beginning mine. And that's going well. And then, in replacement for, for Anna, we've hired Samri Devon. Samri's a principal, current principal at Quail Run Elementary. And so, she'll be the new director of HR. And I will work very closely with Dave Cunningham in that capacity. So, I think two really good, positive hires that I'm a believer in hiring good people, and good people take care of, of things well. So, both of them will do fine. Also, since the last time I talked to you, Brad Kemp was hired as the middle school principal at, at West. And once again, another, I think, strong hire. And Brad comes from Emporia. He's been there for four or five years. And actually, my connection to Brad goes back to Tongonoxi. He was a teacher in Tongonoxi when I was a superintendent there. So, that'll, that'll, that'll be nice. And he's already begun that transition too, and Myron Melton's working with him to getting familiar with West Middle School. So, our next step is to hire Samri's replacement at Quail Run, and that job's posted. We expect to screen and interview and have somebody brought to you for approval. I think, not for the first March meeting, but, or the May meeting, but the second May meeting. But we hope to have somebody hired by, actually, maybe, May 7th, maybe, yeah. So, I think by the first May meeting, we should have a recommendation coming to you. So. So, some of my meetings since that time have also been occurring. I met with Tom Marcus, the new city manager, last week. And that was a good conversation. I really like him. They have a lot of things in common and common interests. So, I'm looking forward to that relationship and, and working on that. We can, it was an opportunity to talk about different common interests when it comes to our plans for development, you know, when it comes to land use and things of that nature. So, use of our facilities, use of their facilities. So, there's a lot of good conversations that I think he's open to and receiving those, receiving that information. So. Also, I think Dr. Dole mentioned in his Friday letter that we had lunch with Rick Ginsburg. Also, yesterday, I attended the 100th Year Anniversary at Cordley, which was a really special event. I got to make the closing remarks to a skeleton audience. By that point, everybody else kind of, but it was still fun. And actually, it was, it was a really, it kind of struck me more personally than I anticipated once I got there and started interacting with people. And you see the age ranges of, of people who were there, from just the little kiddos to people who had, you know, attended a long time ago, you know, 40, 50 years ago, attended Cordley Elementary School. And this, how, how meaningful that was to them to talk about their school and their experiences there. So, and then, and they had a timeline that went around the library on the glass there, and then articles that were laid out from newspaper articles. And going back and reading those articles was just really fascinating. And talking about Board of Education decisions and administrative recommendations. And of course, that's, that's fascinating to me too. So. But, not to most people, but to me. So, today, I was at Free State High School talking with student council. I've also, I met with Lawrence High School Student Council. So, there's about 25 to 30 students. Probably, they're my most interesting conversations that I've had, just because, you know, I, I love their energy. And whether it's positive or negative, it's just, it's, their energy is contagious. And, and that's, so that's, that's actually, and their honesty. So, if you, if you want good, honest, raw feedback, ask a student, in particular, a high school student. So, because they'll give it to you. But some really great kids. So, I've gotten some really good information. And when I go out on those, on those meetings, whether it's the, these high school kids or also the building leadership team meetings, so that's the other groups I've been meeting with, I scheduled meetings with all 21 building leadership teams. I've met with seven to this point, so I'm a third of the way there. I've met with seven to this point, so I'm a third of the way there, and just have about three more weeks to try to get all those wrapped up. When I meet with them, I show them this document first. And so to focus the conversation, I really want to drive it towards the district's mission, vision, the goals, and show them where we currently are and what we've been working on, and talk about that. I also actually showed them, several weeks ago, Dr. Randy Watson was, came to see our administrators and talked to us about the State Board of Education and their mission and vision and the goals. And it's nice to be able to show them something that I actually believe in, you know, and I think aligns with where we're headed, and so it's, that's a really compliment to him, I think, and to where he's headed with the State Board of Education. So it's nice, I think, to reflect on that a little bit and show them that that's something to look forward to. So, but when we talk about this, there's another document I share with them to kind of start things, get the conversation rolling. And I'm calling these conversations State of the District conversations, and with the idea of reflecting on current year, planning for the future, and I really try to allow them to speak on all the different things that you would find on our board goal documents, because there's a lot of topics in there. But I do go ahead and pull out some of the more significant ones, and taking this, basically, it's a page from the book that Dr. Dole has really done with, when he's done a one-large group meeting, typically at the end of May, that includes certified staff and classified staff. So we're going to continue, we're going to do that one too, but what we've done is, we typically had a document like this for them to write some reflections in with some of the big topics, like blended learning, our equity work, CI3T, the LGBTQ student supports, our Reading Street implementation, student wellness, physical movement, outdoor learning, professional development, tech access integration, communication, just in general, and then bond construction, facility planning. Then that last area is just open-ended for them. And so I give them this to really take notes, but then we're also sending this out after I leave as a Google form, so they have the ability to go online, fill it out, and then that compiles all the information for us. That's Julie's grand idea, so thanks to Julie for helping me think through that and try to figure out how we would compile all the information we had. So, but it's not only the people from the building leadership teams. I encourage them as representatives of their grade levels, of their departments, to reach out to their peers and collect information to compile it and get feedback. And we have had people responding, so that's also positive. The conversations have been really good. I try to talk to them about the importance of it to me as far as my connections with them and connecting with the buildings. I talk to them about how important it is for me to be accessible, and I want them to feel like I'm approachable, so I, and I've gotten some feedback about that, emails that have come after I've gotten, after I've gone, that people appreciate the time, they appreciate just having access one-on-one to talk to me, even though it's a small group. One of the things that, you know, I try to use to guide the conversation is bring in our equity work and our equity training, and I talk to them about, you know, how important it is as a leader to seek multiple perspectives. I encourage them to speak their truth and try to give them that space to do that. And so, you know, when we talk about our E-Team training, I think the value of that can be seen if you use that and make it applicable towards any leadership situation. And that's the common language for them. Our staff gets that, and so it helps, I think, in guiding these conversations and making them more meaningful. I've encouraged them to, you know, not only give us praise but criticism, and we have, and I have received some of that, and, but it's always been productive, and there are some common threads that I'm seeing, and it'll be interesting when I compile everything together, but there's a lot of positives, and more, much more positives than there are criticism, which is, makes me feel really good. I will tell you, you know, sometimes the conversations are pretty raw. I would describe them as pretty raw, is that you see some emotion in people, and which is, actually makes me pretty proud because there's a lot of passion in our teachers in our buildings. I mean, people really care about what they do and are very interested in making a difference. And so, and that's a great place to start. So it's just a matter of making sure we have common, common goals, common interests. And then it's just an opportunity for me to talk to them about how much I appreciate what they do, and I think that's been received well, and I'm looking forward to the next 14 meetings. It's busy, but it's actually, and it's honest, I get as much out of it as I'm putting into it, so really, it's well worth my time. I tell them I plan to be back. The way it's going right now, I could see doing it annually. I don't necessarily want to do it monthly, but I could see making it an annual process, just listening tours and developing more of a relationship with their building leadership In the last week, I've contacted, I did some research on the potential for doing a survey, a professional survey, and the one I'm probably most interested in, and probably because we've had a prior relationship with them, is Patron Insight. And I'm looking, I had a good conversation, had some emails exchanged with them. We've used them a couple of times in the past, and I think they understand us and they understand what the needs are in this particular situation, and have done this before, where they've given an anonymous online survey. So typically, in the past, when we've used them, they've done a telephone survey, and this one actually is, it's online email sent directly from them and goes back to them and to their database, and talks about basically the culture and the climate of the district, and can get as detailed as talking about different departments at the district office, and kind of hone in on what types of things that we want to get feedback on. So propose a potential meeting coming up in the next week or so with board officers to talk about what that would look like. So, any questions?
Sounds great. I appreciate that you're hitting the ground running. I think that's one major benefit to selecting you, that you're here and you're working, and we appreciate that a lot. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Kyle. I do want to report that the city, county, school, district meeting, so the date that worked for the city didn't work for us, so I think we're going to look to June, June 13th or 27th, if we did it prior to the board meeting, would that have any potential conflicts for anybody?
I won't be here.
All right, you'll be, sure.
13th or 27th?
Right.
I won't be here on the 27th.
I think, you're out of town both?
Yeah.
Okay. It's okay with Marcelle if we do it without him. Is it okay with you if we do it without you? Okay. So we could potentially do it, one of those meetings in June, and then follow up with you about what happened.
Maybe make the 13th the first choice.
Okay. Then I'll get back to you on what happens with that, if we can nail something down. Great. Any other business? Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks.